Let's call the, uh, meeting. The Nelson County Board of Education at 8:00 PM on March 17th, 2015. First, we would please stand with the president.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Nelson County Board mission statement is, "The Nelson County Board of Education representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children pledge to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting missionary direction through efficient policy oversight and efficient resource management." And our vision statement is, "Quality education now, learning for life." Okay? Now, Mr. Orr, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We don't have changes to the agenda that people might have picked up as they came in. We did make a slight revision to that which was sent out to the beforehand to remove the CCR ethic last time, so we'll really get a new call.
Okay. Uh, also, we had, we'd like to have a moment of silence, please.
Some of you, uh, I'm sure you will have noticed that we're one, uh, we're missing one of our own tonight. Uh, Mr. Damon Jackie is not able to be here tonight. His father, Mike Jackie, passed away last Friday evening, and so, uh, we would appreciate it if we could take just a moment of silence in recognition of Mr. Jackie.
Okay, thank you.
For those of you who, uh, who don't know Mr. Jackie, I'll just tell you very briefly that I, I think, uh, one of the first times I met him was when he was actually working with children. Uh, he was a big proponent of the extension office in 4H and always was involved in the 4H photography club, and, uh, so my first encounter with him was really with him working with children, and so, he fits in very nicely with, uh, with our mission and purpose in the school system, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, third on the agenda is student and stakeholder engagement, and, uh, A would be student performance, and that would be Superintendent Orr.
So, we've got, uh, actually, a lot of folks, it's really exciting to get to hear students say the pledge to the flag. Adults just don't know how to do it like you kiddos do, so it's nice to have you here for that, to have lots of you here. We have a lot of students to recognize, but we are gonna start with some students from Cox's Creek, so Miss Angie Taylor, if you would, uh, make the introductions, and, uh, we're excited to hear what these youngsters have to say.
Good evening, they're a little nervous about being in front of this group. Uh, since, uh, this is a little group, and it's not all of them, but, um, this little group came to me with an idea that they wanted to help, um, save some tigers. And so, I'm going to let them do, uh, the project that they had started, and they had a goal, and they actually exceeded the goal, so without further ado, I'll introduce them. This is Brenna Clinton, Maggie Sweeney, and Megan. So, they're here to do a little presentation for you. Megan, what is it? No? Maggie?
Hello, my name is Maggie, and this is the Tiger Bake Del Project.
Megan, wanna tell them how the project got started?
So, one day I was watching television, and I saw this commercial, and it said, "Save the Tigers." It also said, "If you want to save, if you like the Tigers, you might wanna save them now." So, I was thinking about it for a couple weeks, and then I got my friends, and we started doing it. There are only 3% or 3,200 tigers left in the world. Most of those tigers are kept in captivity, like these in preservation. Tigers are poached or hunted with their skin and their bone. 25% of tigers are threatened each day. There are less than 3,000 wild tigers unless the vet for man decrease. Tigers will desperately need our help. Tigers are becoming extinct at an amazing rate. May we remind you that tigers are an endangered species. Our tigers are already extinct. Our research has found ways to save the tigers. If we do not raise enough money by the next year, the years could be, the tigers could be totally extinct. You could hurt its skin and a bone, and we're dead. We have, we had raised a goal, we had a goal of raising 300 to send the World Wildlife Foundation to Save the Tigers Fund. The foundation has a goal to double the population by 2022. We raised $400 by hosting a bake sale for several days. There is only 7% of habit left for tigers, habitat left for tigers. Set of pictures shows some different, different types of tigers. This is a video, and it's only 30 seconds.
Um, Ms. Taylor assigned this thing for me, and it's... Oh. The report in this is, I was the manager, and I was the co-manager, and Ms. Taylor was the manager, and so, we try, and I had, and we, like, did all this stuff, like Megan said, like Megan said, uh, she watched tele, she was watching television, and she picked out this, she gathered, gathered, me, Maggie, Lexi, and Rihanna, and Lexi and Rihanna weren't able to make it today, and we don't know why.
They did a great job with their bake sale and reaching, you know, they exceeded from 300 to go into 400, so, uh, congratulations to them, and, um, that money is being sent to the World Foundation for Tigers.
Good job!
We are concluding with a performance from our course.
Hi, my name's Brenna, and I am presenting the Good News Report. Bloomfield Elementary ha, has, has had an artist in residence, and, and our students have enjoyed learning about American history throughout art. They have created morals about Native Americans and the Revolutionary War. That will be hung in our cafeteria to showcase student work. The artist has also shared ideas with teachers as well as lesson plans for them to impale in, in our classroom. Bloomfield Middle School Student Leadership Technology will complete, will complete at the state level on March 26th. Their construction on Raspberry Pi, a func, a functional, a functioning computer made for primary cycle of parts, wowed the judges at residential competition. This event had, was, was in the last Wednesday's Kentucky Standard. They were proud Bloomfield, the proud Bloomfield Middle School team was featured on the front page. Nelson County High School has qualifiers for the state in two parts in respective rural regions. Way to go, hearts! Wrestling, Andrew Ackley first, and Josh Hayes second. Swimming, Will Hinton tied for, tied for, tied for first in 50, in the 50-yard freestyle, and was first in the 100-yard breaststroke. Congratulations to Houston Hendricks for setting, for setting a Nelson County archery record. Houston shot 292 out of 300 during the Barstown tournament. He finished third overall out of 388 archers. Congratulations to New Haven Elementary Academic Team, who competed in the District Governors' Cup Competition on February 28th. Everyone did a great job and worked very hard. Good luck to the students preparing to complete in the regional competition on March 21st in Barstown. Thomas Nelson High School Senior Beta attended the Kentucky State Senior Beta Convention at the Gulf House in Louisville, Kentucky on January 26th through 27th, 2015. Congratulations to three state contributors at the Beta State Convention in Arts and Crafts woodworking, Alex Mattingly and Austin Mattingly. Living Literature Team for earning state runner-up includes Tom Robey, Eric Clark, Rachel Kinger, Hannah Greer, Hannah Thompson, White Love, Evan Newsome, Jay Martina, and Kendra Roller. Arts and Crafts, Ray Long, Charlie Unger, and Brittany Woodward, first place. District, the district grades $10,240 for WHAS Crusade for Children.
Thank you, sir. I'm Steve.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Expect the Best recognition, and that also is Mr. Orr.
We'll, uh, we're gonna have, uh, Tom, I think, talk about our calendar art contest, and that's why we also have a lot of folks here, so we'll go ahead with that, Tom.
This, uh, the contest, this is the third year of this contest, and the, it all funnels into a calendar that we create from all this fine work that's on display out there. It, it represents every school in the district, and we have seven schools that have winning artists, and it's, uh, it's just, uh, the type of work and the range of the work is just really, really a good representation of our students. And so, what we're going to do tonight is, uh, make a presentation and bring people up here to have a photograph made, and we'll have a group shot, and all, all the work that's on display out there does volunteer, so the, uh, each family can take their piece with them when they go, and, uh, that's, that's really it. Mr. Beck is gonna help out with reading the names, gonna make a photograph as they come up, and then we'll make another, uh, group shot. But, at any rate, this is, uh, it's, it's, uh, just a great representation of the fine artists that we have here in Nelson County. Thank you.
So, uh, our future professional artists that we have in residence for us today, when we come in here, you'll please come up here to get your picture made with Mr. Orr, and then, uh, Ms. Wilson will be standing right there. You'll stay up there, don't go back to Mom and Dad yet, we're gonna also have a group shot when you finish. We first wanna recognize from Foster Heights Elementary, Ms. Reese Thompson, and I saw her early pictures. And from Cox's Creek Elementary, Michelle Hudley. Also from Cox's Creek Elementary, Kate and Taylor and Macy Unseld. Uh, from Foster Heights Elementary, Damian Norman. I hope he was able to be here tonight, wasn't he? Uh, we'll go on to Samantha, uh, excuse me, Sampson Hunt from Boston School. And next is Brooke Stumpf from Bloomfield Middle School. Next, we have Ross Cecil from the New Haven School. Next is Samantha Bennett from Bloomfield Middle School. Now, to our high school ranks, we have Haley Boland from Thomas Nelson High School. I don't think she was able to be here tonight. We'll move on to Lizzie Batch Elbor. We also have Shelby Armstrong. From Nelson County High School, we have Heather Decker. And lastly, the winner of the cover, Alexis Holzapple. And we can have another round for all of our artists. And, boys and girls, if you'll just stay real still for a moment.
Is everybody ready? Get smiles, right here.
Thank you all, very much. The, uh, the next thing that we wanna do is a part of our Expect the Best, uh, we will, if folks would like to go, we won't have our feelings hurt, I promise. Congratulations to you. We do have some other folks that we want to recognize tonight, and, uh, we expanded our Expect the Best recognitions. We, I think, got snowed out the last time that we were scheduled to be able to do this, so we moved it up to tonight, and we're glad we get to do that. So, have, uh, Expect the Best awards for teacher, classified staff, student, and parent, and so, I'm not sure if everybody's here, but hopefully we'll have much of everybody, I think. First of all, our teacher, Ms. Kathy Walker, always encourages and pushes students at Bloomfield Elementary to achieve their best. Kathy loves the children and makes her room environment comfortable and enjoyable for children to be eager to learn. She communicates very well with her parents and leaves no stone unturned when helping her students, so in just a moment, we'll have Kathy join the others and come up. We also wanna recognize one of our nurses. Liz Mattingly is a nurse serving students at Old Kentucky Home in Nelson County High School. She's a leader among our nurses, our school staff, and beyond, and she is very active on the Wellness Committee and serves as a mentor for new nurses, so we're really glad to have Liz. Uh, our student is Judy Lovelace. Judy is a student at Horizons, who is the first person in her family to graduate from high school. Beyond that, she has completed all graduation requirements this semester early. She did a great job motivating other students who were ready to give up and quit school. Not only was she a hard worker, but always has a positive outlook. And, um, understanding that Judy was unable to be here tonight because she, number one, had a job interview, and then after the job interview, she had to go to the job that she already had, so she's already out there doing great work and making us proud, so we'll be happy for her. And then, Kiada Harmon, who is assistant volleyball coach at Nelson County High School and volunteers at girls' basketball games, is a parent at Nelson County High School at Foster Heights Elementary. She's a wonderful coach as well as a person. She's always got the best interests of our students in mind with everything she does. She spends a tremendous amount of time making our students better people, so if you folks will come forward, then we've got some...
Good, good job!
I've moved a little farther.
Yeah, we don't want to feel old.
Everybody's attention, tell me what I can do.
Really, do whatever you want to do. You're the professional.
On three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Snuck in all out, another one.
Thank you.
We, we had, uh, this was, I mean, I don't know, we had co-winners, and one of the winners wasn't here when we ran through the first time, so we're gonna do it again.
Sorry.
So...
Oh, so, I'll take those, I'll take those.
Ladies and gentlemen, in a time for third, we have Caitlin Taylor and Macy Unseld. Co-artists on the same piece.
Good job.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'll go to a middle school volleyball.
I know.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Operations Consent Agenda, uh, which included, includes the information, personnel actions, treasures reports, bills and claims, unitary reports, leaps of action, minutes from previous meetings, overnight hours, stake trips, and flood breaks and requests, and these were in our packets when we, uh, were sent to us to review. We didn't introduce this type of information before we come to our meetings. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Page, second by Mr. Norman, all in favor? opposed? Motion approved. Next, we have Efficient Resource Management. I depay the selection of architect by NCE LC, which is the Early Learning Center, and Mr. Hoppensmith, I'll take us through that.
Couple weeks ago at the work session, we, uh, we talked about this, and we are recommending tonight that we, we select Studio Kramer, Stephen Ward, there he is back there, I thought I saw him. He's here tonight, uh, Stephen has done, uh, is our primary architect on the last several projects we've done, um, and we are being recommending Studio Kramer to finish the Nelson County Early Learning Center for us. He's provided some, uh, some, uh, drawings that, uh, what things might look like, uh, the, uh, we are really happy with the work that he does, and just, uh, as a reminder to some board members that never have a while, and, and information for some new board members. As far as fees are concerned for architects, there is a state standard scale, um, that Department of Education will not let us exceed that with, uh, capital dollars, which is what we use to pay for these services, um, and the last several projects, Studio Kramer has offered their services for less than that standard rate. There's some negotiating room in there, but, uh, and they, they have worked with us on that, and we do recommend that they handle the project, the Early Learning Center. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I need a motion, Nelson County Board of Education approves Studio Kramer as the architect for the construction of the expansion at the NCE LC in accordance with 702 KAR4160. Do I hear a motion? Motion was made by, um, Diane Bickgreading, second.
Second.
Uh, second by their paper, Mr. Page, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh, next is the selection of construction manager for NCE LC, and that is Mr. Hoppensmith again.
Another item we discussed a couple weeks ago, and, uh, we have submitted a recommendation, uh, to, uh, to hire ECD Incorporated as construction manager on the project at the Early Learning Center. We further recommend, and we talked about this again at the, uh, at the... We further recommend, and we talked about this again at the work session, and we're detail to further recommend that they not bid on actual construction, that they're managing on that project. That they will be the manager, but that they will be excluded from bid opportunities on that specific project. And that's our recommendation. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, the motion for is the Nelson County Board of Education approve ECD Incorporated as the construction manager for the expansion at the EC, I'm sorry, NCE LC in accordance with 702 KAR4160. It is further recommended that ECD Incorporated not bid on construction related to this project. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Page made a motion. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Greading. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item is BG1, Thomas Nelson High School, Phase 3. And that again, Mr. Hockensmith.
This is something that's been obviously on the radar since probably 2008. I think that's when we, BG1, the original BG1 for Thomas Nelson High School was approved sometime in 2008. We had to break that project up into phases. What's already there had to be built in two phases for a couple of different reasons. And in the end, we weren't able to build the final piece of that, the auditorium, due to restrictions in our funding potential. Just didn't have the money to do it. We are getting extremely close to being able to fund that project in addition to the Early Learning Center. We talked about it a couple weeks ago, and we felt like we were close enough that it warranted approval at this point and going forth with bidding that project, seeing if those numbers come back. And I think at worst case scenario, we're within a year of being able to do it. Best case, we can do it now, at the same time that we construct the Early Learning Center. That's certainly our hope. We're going to keep our fingers crossed.
When that project was done, there was a promise made to the Thomas Nelson High School that we would get the auditorium go along.
That's certainly our goal, and certainly we plan to do it. We hope we can do it. Again, construction program this summer. That's our hope. Again, we're, it's very close. It's so close, I don't want to tip my hand as to whether I think it's going to happen or not. It is very, very close. It just depends on what those construction bids come back at. I think it's very possible it could happen this summer, or hoping to get construction this summer.
I got to get the board. Unless you're in the arts, you don't know how important it is to have an auditorium. I mean, you just can't put on concerts and plays in a gym. And this just makes more, you know, this will make the whole school complete as far as I can. And I appreciate the time of it too. I will do. Okay, the motion is the Nelson County Board of Education approve the attached BG1 for the construction of Thomas Nelson High School, Phase 3 auditorium in accordance with 702 KAR4160. Do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion. Ms. Greading made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Page. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Hockensmith, Kista Bus Sale.
In March every year, I mean, March is most years anyway, we approve the resolution that's attached to give the district the opportunity to participate in the Kista Bus Sale. And we've, you all approved in the working budget back in September, the purchase of six school buses this year. We hope we can keep approximately six buses in the budget on an annual basis. Our, based on our size fleet, if we can do that, we'll keep most of our buses around 14 years, sometimes a little longer, which is what the state recommends. That's how long we're able to receive depreciation on them back through the funding formula. And that's when we buy new, obviously, we get rid of the old buses. We've got a number of ways to do that. We can advertise bids locally. We can put them on eBay, we've done that. Depending on the pricing that comes back, we can take them to the scrapyard. Or we can sell them through the highest, or to the highest bidder as part of the Kista program. We've gotten better returns going through Kista, about 95% of the time I would pass. We always like to make it available to local bidders. If someone expresses interest, we share with them that the process for bidding to the Kista program. And certainly, we try to make it available through a local bid process if someone locally expresses interest in one of our buses. That doesn't happen very often. When it does, we try to make sure that happens for local folks that might have a need. But generally speaking, with someone who the Kista program works well, we'll get the bids back in May, accept or reject, and the buses will be picked up over the summer. So around the first of July, we'll remove these buses from our policy for next fiscal year. And we will have just recently added the buses that we just purchased this year that probably come in in May, I'm guessing.
How many buses do that leave us spare? When we read it, there are 14.
After the sale, nobody's got 14.
We have 14 spare buses?
Believe me, it takes.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't know, that kind of thing, and that's a large amount.
It takes, you know, it did take, it's running, you have, every day, you know, we've got about, you know, on average, about five or six, and you haven't expected every day. When no store's bringing those buses, then they have to have a spare bus to take with them. And plus, if you've got one that's down, kind of long-term, had to deal with, so to speak, you've got to have one to do it for that. So it takes, it takes, it takes quite a few buses to keep them all going, so. And then plus, you've got some athletic coaches and stuff that use buses a lot, I've done them at a little early. And they need to have a spare bus to go on athletic trips or something like that also. So it takes quite a few to keep it all.
Have we sold one on eBay?
It's been a while, we have done that.
That sounds funny, doesn't it?
We buy and sell on eBay from time to time.
Boston School was sold out.
Really? Do we make money?
No.
No?
We did better there than we did a little bit. We outfitted the entire Thomas Nelson band, thanks to the director out there, which purchases, mostly purchases via eBay.
Really?
He stretch dollars, he really worked harder.
I knew it worked, I knew it.
He worked really hard, and, you know, so we do that from time to time.
Okay, remaining motion, motion is the Nelson County Board of Education adopt the resolution to participate in the Kista program for the sale of school buses and authorize the superintendent or his designated to accept or reject bids. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Norman made a motion, second? Ms. Greading, second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Ms. Wilson, where's our makeup snow day?
Okay, we've missed a total of eight days, and we've already made up two of those. So my recommendation tonight is that we make up the last six days by starting with May the 26th and add them on to the end of the school year, which would make our final day on June the 2nd.
As of right now.
As of right now.
Okay.
We want to talk about kind of where that leaves us in terms of closing school year. I heard from the high schools, and I know they're already taking calls on what graduation will be. So what I'll mention to you all tonight is kind of the possibilities that we have in front of us. There is a bill that has come out of both houses in the legislature that is awaiting the governor's signature, and the indications are that he will sign it, that gives us the flexibility that we had last year. And what that essentially amounted to was that, and I'll put it in this year's terms, that we could, with permission from the Department of Education, graduate no later than June 5th. We can say we will graduate June 5th, no matter how many makeup days or how many weather days we miss. That would be that Friday of the week that we're already in session. We have, with the length of our school days, enough time that we could excuse a couple of days if we chose to because we needed to. We talked about that a little bit last week when we met for the work session. You know, it's kind of a back and forth issue for us because if we hold out waiting to be certain that we'll finish school on June 2nd, then parents and families will have a tough time printing invitations for graduation. And so we know we want to accommodate them as best we can. The flip side of that is we want to be sure that people don't think we are just tossing away days that we might have trouble actually getting to school if we were to have flood days, having forbidden we have any more snow. So we can look at June the 2nd, as this recommendation does, as being the last day of school. And we could tentatively say that graduation would be that evening of June 2nd and get people kind of thinking and planning for that point. We've got options. If we were to have flood days that would keep us out, one of the options, of course, is that we said if there are kids we can't get to with flood days, we might go ahead and have school. And we mapped that out last year. We felt like most of the time, that would be, you know, more than 50 kids, that we wouldn't be able to get to with the kind of door-to-door delivery that we're accustomed to with buses, but that we could give them places they could meet us to get on a bus, and if they could get to us, and if they can't, then we would excuse their absences. That way, we could continue, still meet the time that we set for finishing school. We can forgive those days. We can give it some time to see how things shake out over the next couple of weeks. We do want to try to give us folks a sense before we go on spring break, as to when we're going to graduate, if that's possible. I want to throw a lot of stuff out there, so.
So you're saying instead of going on a Friday like we always do, we're going to move it up to June the 2nd if we don't miss another day?
Well, here's, here's kind of the thinking in actually talking with my local historian. I've got a couple of them.
And it's not me.
That in years past, when we only had the one high school, really, whatever day the last day of school fell on, it was kind of assumed and kind of announced by the high school, actually, instead of the school board, when graduation would be. Now, for the last several years, the way it has worked out is we have always graduated on a Friday night. I believe that's been the case since I've been here. But the way we're scheduled now, if we finish school on Tuesday this afternoon, keep your fingers crossed, I think we would hate to wait until Friday to graduate because people will be eager to leave town, eager to do other things. And so typically, if we postpone the ceremony for several days after we've actually finished school, we'll lose families and staff that would otherwise have participated in the graduation, we had to do that. And it's my understanding that it's been pretty typical over the years to graduate when school is out as opposed to wait until we can.
Well, I think the graduation on Friday nights, there's a couple of corporates, and one of them is practice graduation. And I think that's a very, very important night for those graduated seniors. And, I don't know, that's the parents have to volunteer. And, yeah. So, yeah, it's a very long night, but. Have you received feedback that that would actually happen? That, you know, teachers and staff would leave town? I mean, have you, have you received feedback on that?
I haven't received specific feedback on that over, you know, this year. Just based on my time at high school, I do know there were a couple of occasions when my school didn't get to graduate on that day after, or speaking of the day that school was out. And we did lose a few staff members on where they took off, or in some cases, parents, but generally, it was just staff. And so I've not sought that feedback this year.
Okay, there's been a couple of times when if we didn't graduate on the day we're supposed to, like June 2nd, even if it's on Tuesday, because I worked hard to graduate for about 10 years, so I know what it is, get up on Thursday morning and have to go back to work. But I found where some parents had made, shouldn't have done it, but they did it, trips to Florida, and they head out just as soon as they can. And that way, if they had planned prior to June 1st, they're losing money, or they may lose their money, or, I see both ways. I mean, it's not, it's not the most perfect thing in the world, but.
I'm just thinking about the relatives and the family that are coming in from out of town. And having them, you know, coming out of town. I mean, I just, I think that's.
Don't be think.
I agree with that.
Let the principals do their checking, and if that's what they want to do, then, I mean, we can say whatever we feel, but they're the ones that are going to hear that.
I think they hear from the parents.
They know who their help's going to be to do the project graduation, and they know the function where we've been.
We've got a little bit of time even before spring break, and you guys will give me the chance. And what we can do is if we would ask that you go ahead and approve the makeup days, those two days in June, if the recommendation comes. And then I will get some specific feedback for how we want to try to follow the last day of school with graduation and bring that back to.
Let me ask something. I know they're not done anymore, the practice is not done, but seniors graduate, I know you're not in a lot of this, on the 21st of May, I know that you don't do that anymore, I know that. But, I don't know. I mean, that makes more sense than tagging it out till that next Friday. But you can't do that because you have, still have so many hours and so many, and.
That's why they did it when I graduated.
Well, we did too, but, you know, we graduated at the end of the week, but we didn't have time to graduate. That's in the old days, I know. But I think about it. I don't know. I don't know, it's a hard call there.
We can, we can postpone this if you guys would like to do that, and I can get the feedback that we've talked about. I would suggest that if we do that, we need to turn around and have a special call meeting before go to spring break so that we can get the announcement made for graduation and what we expect that to be. So I apologize for putting us in a spot where we would need to postpone that.
So what she just asked, that can't happen, right?
I'm not saying that it can't, we need to, I would feel better about getting the governor's signature on that legislation and making sure that we read through that and are interpreting all of that correctly, that we've got our hours lined up. I want to have my ducks in a row before we approve a graduation that depended on applying that law where it's not exactly a done deal yet.
Well, believe me, I wasn't at home thinking about this, it just came to my mind. Because we've done it before. I mean, I don't know if it's against rules now, but we have done this. We did it one year, I remember we didn't get out of school till June, I don't know, I work 10th, 11th, 12th, something weird. But they went ahead and the seniors went ahead and we graduated them, and then the kids went back in like two or three days. But now I know that's too long. Three and four days is too long.
Under normal circumstances, state law, at least now, does require that you cannot graduate before the last official day of school. So this bill does have an exception clause to allow that, but I haven't studied it sufficiently to make a recommendation for a vote from you guys yet, so.
Okay, where does somebody motion that we're approving makeup days?
Well, if I'm hearing you guys correctly, we may, you may just want to hold off on that as well.
Okay.
Because that gives you the maximum flexibility. If we're going to come back and do a special call meeting in order to determine when we would be able to graduate before spring break comes, we may as well hold out and do it all at once when we know, make one decision and we're finished.
Okay, then we're going to table the decision for makeup days and the last day of school. Is that what we're going to do?
Yes.
Okay. Let the minutes reflect, then we're going to table the approval of a makeup day and the last day of school.
Why don't we make a motion to that?
Okay, can make a motion.
First to have an extra motion.
Okay, Mr. Norman made a motion, second. Ms. Greading, second. So approved. All in, I'm sorry, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, approved. Okay.
We'll, we'll get that taken care of, and I'm sorry if we didn't have everything lined up and loaded yet.
That's okay. Okay, the last is our guest comment. I'm sorry, students and stakeholder engagement, guest comments. Any person wishing to address the board may do so following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address. And if you represent a group, state the name of the group that you are representing. Do we have any comments? Do we have any comments? Okay, not so, the meeting Nelson County Board of Education is adjourned. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Page made a motion?
Second.
Mr. Norman, second? All in favor? Thank you.